6:31 on June 26th, that is now the regular board meeting, we'll call it to order. I'd like to welcome everybody who's here. We'll go ahead and do a... Or we'll go ahead and review the I-35 mission statement and the district priorities. Mission statement reads, "The Interstate 35 Community School District exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive, successful citizens in a never-changing society. District priority number one, articulate and support a cohesive student-centered pre-K through 12 vision for continuous school improvement. Number two, engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century. And number three, operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness." The agenda everybody has, it does need to be a motion and a second for us to take action to approve it. Move to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, then moves us to the open forum. Ted, did you hear anybody sign up today?
I did not see any.
Okay. I will go ahead and read through the open forum statement regardless. Residents, students, parents, guardians, and staff members of the district may address the board about relevant topics. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker's participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask speakers to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees or students or their performance. Did we receive the student report, summertime and all?
Nope.
Okay. Administrative reports.
So, I think all of them are listed here. They're... We're in and out a lot during the summer, so working on handbooks and I guess if you have questions, Ms. Whitson and Mr. Weber are here. Otherwise, I can take questions back to Mrs. Woods if you have any.
I was not able to see the report.
Which one?
Mrs. Woods.
Mine either. I didn't have the right permissionings.
Yeah.
But I requested access.
Likewise.
Alright, I will have those sent a different way then because I'm just sharing their links and they're not... I will make sure that they come to me and I'll change the access to make sure they're on there.
What... Forgive me, but what causes that?
So, there are permissions on every document and so when I create a document or I create a folder, as a board member, you're given access to that folder. If it comes from an outside person, if they don't give you those permissions, then you don't have access. And I wouldn't know that because I'm not the owner of it. So, like Danielle's report, you can't read. If you don't send that to me, I don't know you can't read it. Because I can read it because I have access.
So she can put different documents in different folders?
Correct.
And so theoretically, the administrators could have a board permission for it.
Correct. And that's what I thought they had established, but for what I didn't know that you guys couldn't see it.
Could you see mine?
Yeah.
So that's because my original one, mine's a running document, so you can always go back. My original says open to the public. So literally anyone that clicks the link, it's nothing private about it. You can't edit it, but you can view it.
Yeah. And I thought that's what all of them were because we didn't have an issue with the last one, so I thought it had been fixed, but I will...
And maybe it just wasn't moved there.
Well, no. You should be able to see it if that was fixed. So I will... I will change that. You could see Sharon's and Brayton's, correct? Okay.
Alright. So does anybody have any question on the administrative reports?
Well, let me put up Mrs. Woods since she couldn't see it.
I just have one question on Ms. Whitson. It was, and this may be jumping the gun too early, just talking about doing work on secondary handbook. Are you... She's just over there. Are you expecting a lot of changes to the handbook or is it too early to tell and you'd rather address it next week?
I would say that we are targeting some areas that needed to be beefed up.
Okay.
To have some improvements.
And Mr. Beck was working on that with her.
We're working together.
That was maybe my question. The new set of eyes.
Like on the discipline and the procedures and processes. We'll be putting in, and haven't done this yet, but like the standards for reference grading for middle school will be different. So is high school, but you'll still see grades in the middle school, you'll see the standards.
Thank you.
What else were we working on with this?
We'll just change some of the language from like punishments to consequences. Trying to take more of a coaching approach. Just want kids to learn from behaviors and learn how to be more successful, the word punishment. Softening. Yeah, yeah, just kind of shape it more about what we're really about.
Plus, we added the fight song because Adam noticed it wasn't in there.
Yeah, I've looked for the fight song forever.
He said, "What's the fight song?" I'm like, "Well..."
I do love that it's the Iowa tune though, that's my favorite. We're working on change.
Other questions for Ms. Whitson? So, Ms. Woods included the conditions of learning survey for the third and fourth grade students, and that'll be information that we share at the next board meeting for the whole district. So you'll see the conditions of learning for everybody, but she shared hers. And so you can see adult student relationships, which was one of their goals, was up 18 points on the survey, so 97%. And you can look at comparatively what they were in Heartland over here in the Iowa Department of Education. Boundaries and expectations, are they clearer? Are they consistent? And up 13, so 92%. This emotional safety is up 14. I know that doesn't look high, but it's the way the questions are worded and we've had conversations with the state about that for the last couple of years. You can see comparative to the other districts in Heartland and then also within the whole state. So, we're at 26% this year. Physical safety is up 39%, so that's at 83%. And you can see that's significantly higher than other Heartland schools or the state. And then student relationships, again, student-to-student relationships is up significantly as well. So, those are the results from that third and fourth grade survey. And then the only other thing she had in hers was the education foundation is supplying materials for the elementary building thinking classrooms, which is the book study that we did with the math team. So myself and Mrs. Woods, Ms. Whitson, and the high school math, middle school, no, not middle school, they're reading it this summer, and the elementary math, all did a book study in the spring. And so they're going to fund some of the things that we want to do as a result of that learning. So, that's Ms. Woods's report. Any questions about that one? I can send her a quick email. She's in Texas with a team at a conference this week, so... And then Mr. Weber's?
I had a question on the mental fortitude athletic coach. So, I know...
What did your daughter say? That was the question.
Well, she liked it. She did like it. I did have a parent that had asked me, though her daughter wasn't able to attend. And so I think it was sort of frowned on that she wasn't able to attend. So is it optional? Because it seems like it's been on Sundays. Have they been on Sundays?
Not all the time. Also, like I know they ended up, the nice thing about him, he's a former A.D. and there's constant communication with the coaching staff. He's come to three home games to watch and see what's going on. You just want to know it.
Yeah.
And then when we... We actually had kind of gone into a little bit of a slide as a team and a lot of one run losses and stuff. And if you, I don't know if you remember, hopefully your daughter would, but we actually changed a, I think, let me change a Wednesday, if you remember, day practice to where the group was split in half. And instead of practicing the full two hours together for halftime, they were with him, half practicing, and then they rotated.
Okay.
So it wasn't just an additional on top of the piece. That's how it started because it was kind of a preseason thing to begin with. But it's also kind of a guinea pig thing. Like we're just kind of starting it slowly with programs. I want to get feedback from, part of the surveys at the end of the year will be about that from the kids to say, hey, if that's a big thing, well then we need ID coaches if they find it valuable to schedule that into their practices.
Great. Okay. Great. I would just like to see it not on a Sunday.
Yep.
So, but yeah, thank you. Yeah, she talked highly of it, so...
Brayden, you want to talk two minutes about that all sports night? Is that new?
Something for the last, I'd say, two years, the Booster Club has talked to me about really wanting to get a sports night involved. They, at the beginning, wanted to do it every season. The first year, we just talked about it, but honestly, I was trying to get my feet wet and trying to get a lay-by and everything going on. Trying to find a night four times a year is not easy to do with so many kids and so many activities on top of not just sports but everything else. And so we're going to try a model where it's an all-sports night, it'll be on one night. We're going to start it in August, again, the time of the year, and the kids that are in those sports tend to be a large percent of our student body. And then I'm pairing it with some different items that we're going to do some silent auctions for, those old cloth banners, the P O I sign, a couple other items. And teams are going to come out. Summer, we'll talk about kind of their season just wrapping up. And then fall will be in-season, they'll have those kids. And then winter and spring sports, we'll have kids come down that were on their team last year. And then anyone coming out like freshmen that would be new to the team, spend three to five minutes on the track, talking in front of the home crowd, introducing any captains, any of that kind of stuff. Just in a way, just to celebrate those student bodies. So, we'll have a meal that we put on by the boosters to kind of go with it. And we'll just see how this first year goes and then try and... Now, I submitted this before our postseason stuff was out, so then I would have added it in the other column. The girls are hosting, as long as we keep winning throughout the regionals, so we'll be hosting all the games here. And boys, baseball is hosting the Saturday two district games. We win Saturday, then we'll be up at Van Meter against West Central Valley next month.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Superintendent report.
Yeah, I just, I have been working on the summer roadrunner report, which will go out in July. And one of the things that I, my first little segment, I spent a lot of time on today was the kind of the idea of lifelong learning, which is in our mission statement. And I was able to attend the Unbound Ed Standards Institute in Denver with four of our teachers and coaches, instructional coaches. And when you talk about going to a conference that makes you tired every single day and your brain hurt, this was undoubtedly it. We had a keynote speaker every morning for about an hour, and then we broke apart into different pods or groups. I was in a leadership track. We had Lexi Closer in a K-5 math track. We had Janelle Gutsmer in a 612 math track. We had Stephanie Good in a K-5 leadership. I was in a 912 leadership. And Priscilla Boswell was in a K-5 reading track. And so then for the next seven hours of that day, we just worked on standards and understanding and talking about action steps and talking about best practice and looking at the research and looking at the data. And it was very, very intense. And I said in my article that I wrote, I said, "It really does epitomize that idea of lifelong learning that, you know, even as we as professionals continue and experience and do, there's always more to know and more to learn." And I would say the best part of that whole thing, while exhausting, was the energy and excitement from the people who were there from our school. And it just is, it's just so rewarding that we're on the right track and people understand and that they're willing to do the hard work. And that is so valuable and it just recharges you. So it was an incredible experience. We're going to meet July 6th. Lexi was finishing up some softball with the middle school, so we're going to meet on July 6th. And we'll have much more detailed report for you in the July meeting, but a lot of good will come from that, I think, and help us with our P V and direction for the whole district, so...
A lot of times the excitement fades and then the takeaways after a conference kind of get diluted out once you get into the old swing of things.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you kind of maximize the impact of these?
Yeah, so every day, at the end of the day, I always ask the group, so we stayed in an Airbnb, we all had our own bedroom, but we were like together. Right? Like we were together. And so we had the school van, we drove out to Denver together. And every night, it was, what was your one takeaway? What's one thing you want to remember? I have a notebook that they gave us that has 47 pages of notes. There's just, I took, and everybody else has a similar from their track. And so what we talked about is what are the one or two things that we think will have the most impact that align with what we're already going to work on? And how do we just make it more specific and more deliberate? So that's what our focus is going to be. Because if we can impact one or two things to the level that we think will make a move here even further in the right direction, then that's what we want to spend our time on. Not everything, because that's not possible.
Can't be. And do those get incorporated into some of the goals?
Yes, very much so. Yep. And that's how we choose the conferences that we go to. They have to align with what the goals are, so...
Makes sense.
Yep.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Moving on, we will discuss and approve consent items. This is something that does require a motion and a second for us to take action on. These include the past meeting minutes that everybody has, the health details, financial statements, our open enrollment, and then resignations, reassignments, and contracts I'll read through. Samantha Ruth resigns from daycare, associate position. Nicole Faith and Jennifer Offield, chair, co-head football cheer coach position. Stephanie Raminga hired as assistant high school girls' track coach. Jesse Helton resigns as custodian. Melissa Webb hired as computer science teacher. Alex Boyle hired as teacher leader content coach. Caitlin Hackley resigns as custodian. And Damon Bryan is hired as high school assistant boys' track coach.
Do we have any positions right now? I mean, I'm sure we have some open positions, but do we have any teaching positions that are open or are they all?
We had a, no, the only one we had was a fifth and sixth grade position. And we spent a few hours last week and reworked the schedule, so we do not, as of now, have any positions open.
Computer science teacher is found.
Yes.
That's good.
Yes. Somebody who has experience in library, STEM technology, but doesn't have the endorsement, so is willing to get it though and has taught at all levels, so we're pretty excited about that hire.
Great. What's it take to get the endorsement?
I think it's four classes.
Okay.
And they typically have two years to do it, and then they can get a two-year extension if they need it.
Great.
I did notice a couple of custodian resignations, and I think we went short. Custodians for a while.
Yeah, we still use the service.
Yeah. Concerns about replacing them, I'm sure. Is there any?
Yeah.
Specific action to take in on that besides?
Um, yeah, I mean, no, and I look at the two that are resigning and both of them, I will say, one is going to be in the district still. It's going to just assume a different job for personal reasons. And the other has been, we've known that it was going to be short-term because of, again, advancement and goals that that individual has. So those aren't surprises. I'm glad we've had them because they've been very good for the time that we've had them. But yeah, Rick Gray and I surprisingly have been on, out of the building, different weeks because of vacations and this conference. So he and I are scheduled to meet Wednesday morning to talk through what options we have, so...
The service we're using just does a portion of the...
Correct. Correct.
And where's that service? I don't, I just, is it out of Des Moines or is it local?
It's Des Moines.
Cleaning connections?
Yeah, I think it's called cleaning connections there out of Des Moines.
Coming goes got a little robot. We ever need a robot? Would you like to?
We've talked about the robot surprisingly.
I've had that robot in Bvington before.
Yeah. Bvington. Early mornings, it does. It's a little nerdy.
Yeah. Doesn't have a smile on his face.
Oh, he's not smiling.
Oh. Yeah, that's been part of the conversation.
For sure.
I'll move to approve the consent items. Properly moved and seconded to approve the consent items. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, items for discussion, exit interview. This is for information.
Yeah, so a couple of times, we've had conversations about why staff are leaving. I know that that was one of the concerns brought by some of our public over the last couple of meetings. And so Jen has been doing, Jen Baughman, our H R director, and I have had conversations with staff that have been leaving for the last three or four years. And so I'm just going to let her give you a recap. She provided the report for you, but if you have specific questions, she can give you a whole lot more detail, so... You want to go through that?
Sure. So, I'm not going to read through the report, but just kind of give you some highlights. So when I first started, the first year, we had 14, the first couple of years, we had 14. And then 20, 21, 22, we had 20 different staff members leave us for various reasons. Some of that could have been due to COVID, other things. The things that I found with them giving us personal reasons were either they wanted to pursue another career totally and get out of teaching, or they had a new child, needed to take care of it, or they had aging parents and needed to handle that situation. Some of them just wanted more money, better benefits. Those were more alumni that had to support staff first and certify. So those are kind of a scenario of kind of what we have this past year. We only had eight that left us. Most of the eight were either personal reasons that I mentioned earlier or retiring. One actually left due to moving closer to home. And when I did the exit interview for the one, they indicated that if we, if they lived closer in proximity, they wouldn't have left. They liked the changes that have taken place over the last couple of years here, and they would have stayed. With this as well, I have kind of dug a little deeper and I've been talking to a couple of different of the admin team. I also wanted to start doing like a stay interview type thing. I don't know what that's going to look like, to where we can take a spectrum of different people depending on whether they're first year, kind of middle of the road, and some kind of are veterans, just to see why do you stay? You know, what are some of the things that we are doing well? What are some of the things that maybe we could still improve on? Because we can all improve, obviously. But just to get some of that feedback and those types of things, because I know it's been mentioned in several of the open forums when I've been here, you know, why are people leaving us? So those are the types of pieces that we want to find out, research, and see what we can do to get them to stay with us, be part of our family. The other thing that I have gotten to do this past year was attend the job fair in South Dakota. That was pretty cool and unique. Got to network with several people. There were several districts from around here that were there. Clark was there, just different ones. Sheraton was there. So it's kind of neat to build on those relationships as well as see others from different schools and learn how they do things, what they do, and maybe get some takeaways as to what we can do. Any other information we need clarification on?
I guess my question would be, what's the feedback look like? So, let's just say in the one year, if it was opportunity for advancement, salaries, benefits, how are we taking that information and trying to use it for retention?
So those are things that we've been working on. Mrs. Dettler and I and as well as our labor management group, we've been trying to come up with different solutions. The caveat to that is, and Sharon will tell you, you only get so much money to work with. So it's how do we take things from different areas and apply them differently or look at things differently? Those are some of the things that maybe we look at as far as insurance. How can we take some of that money that we are spending on insurance, like health insurance? We've done that this year with the partially self-funded, so that we can turn that piece around, maybe add to the base or add somewhere else to get them so that they have those salary increases or, I mean, I don't think we can get any return or benefits from other districts that I've been in. I think those are pretty awesome.
But to give you a direct example, after we had our 20 people leave in 2021 and 2022, and a lot of them, even though there's one main reason, they usually tell us one main reason, we know that there's always several factors that go into it. But we did increase our support staff salary. Ray, having you guys approved that $2 increase to all of our support staff, which I think kept several people here. But I think that's the purpose of having those stay interviews, because if they know we're working for them and they're getting good benefits, then they're inclined to be more open and tell us what will help them stay as opposed to go to a different position, somewhere closer in Des Moines or wherever. So that would be like one direct action that that group had recommended. The insurance, again, it's how do we increase the benefits? And that's typically seen a lot more from our support staff and understandably because they're hourly. But some of the conditions, we just, we're not ever going to, we're not ever going to be able to do anything about, you know, aging parents, young children with either, who just want to stay home, which I'm so happy that they get to, or, you know, maybe there's a special needs case or those things, we're just never going to, never going to get around, so...
Do we post any positions on the website or anything? I don't know. I should know, like any like open, probably not teaching positions, obviously, because that's a different site. But if we have any associates positions or anything like that or a custodian?
We was using the Teach Iowa website, but it is going away as of July 1 and we have a new one. It's called Iowa Works. And I've been working with Drew in setting it up. It's going to be similar to Teach Iowa, but it's also using Indeed, and it's also using another background, and I can't think of what it's called, to where they go out to those places too and pull people in to apply for jobs. And all of our positions go out on there. And Heather has attached, like Teach Iowa right now is linked to our website, so if you pull up the website, it has employment. If you click on it, it shows you everything that's out there, from bus driver to custodian to cook to teacher to admin. They're all on one site.
And Heather has done, been intentional about posting positions as well, like on Facebook. That's typically how we get a lot of our support staff.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Is word of mouth.
Any other questions? Thank you, please.
Thank you.
Phase two graphics. This is an actual item that requires a motion and a second for us to take action.
So this is the next phase. I would say we probably have three phases total. Depends on when the administrators come and tell me that they think something else should be worked on. But we're targeting three. We've got probably, this is for our entrances to our gym, both sides, visitor and home, and that elementary fishbowl, I don't know what you'd call it.
Glass wall.
Glass block wall. So these were some of the, and these are not necessarily final renderings, but you can see what they, what they would look like. So this is if you spread it out flat, this is what would be on that glass block wall or something like this. You can see the home and visitors entrances to the gym there as well. And this is the opposite side of the gym, so you can see it here. So the work for this, the last phase of this will be the middle school, a couple of graphics on the walls that make it more of a middle school environment, and then a little bit down this high school hallway. Again, some of it's about signage, but other of it's about kind of pride in the school and trying to have a more visually appealing school or environment for kids. So for these sections, you're talking 27,000. I don't know when that work was scheduled. It's sometime during the school year, I believe, like on a day when we don't have school, but I don't know if we've decided when. It would be dependent on if the board approves it. So this would be phase two. We've done the, you know, you, obviously you've seen the work that we've already done on that, so you get an idea of what it looks like, but this would just be the next step in that process.
The feedback I've gotten on what we've done already has been phenomenal, so... I feel durable, it's held up, it's been one year, is that right?
Yeah. I've actually been surprised.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm surprised that you don't see really anywhere.
Some of that was intentionally moving the lunch lines the opposite way than they've been for years, just to keep kids from standing there picking at that wall. But you're right, I walked past it the last three or four times and kind of just thought the same thing, like wow, that hasn't really changed at all. I'm surprised.
So if we had to replace one, since they already have the graphic design, is it cheaper than?
Well, they had to come back and redo part of the, yeah.
By the secondary office.
Yeah, by the screen, yeah. Yeah, so...
I think the amount would be a lot cheaper if you were looping it in when they're all already coming out. I don't know what I mean, but yeah.
Yes, because they have the design, some of that fixes a little more palpable.
This is just a comment or a thought. I saw a couple of quotes from people still alive, and it's like, what if they would do something stupid?
I know, that's, I always think about that.
I feel Michael Jordan, what if he comes out as something, he does something outrageous, I'm just... What's that?
Like a degenerate gambler?
Right.
Yeah.
But you know, I thought of that. When it just popped up, I'm like, ooh, I don't know if I'd...
Yeah, we've actually, I said, I think the quotes are powerful. But that's the same thing, like naming a building after somebody who's still alive. You're just always like, ah! So, I think we would have that conversation before we finalize those.
Yeah.
I thought the same thing, but I didn't share it yet.
I'm too conservative, but...
Where does this money come from?
This is typically from Pebble or Save.
Is this O.G. Simpson wrote this on here?
I think that was Brayton.
You know, I didn't...
You're kidding, I didn't see that one.
Okay, I was like, no!
Put that on the marketing, oh my gosh!
Not a good joke.
I know, she's like, what?
We're going down, chasing the rabbit.
All right, in that case, we'd find out how quick they can replace and how much that would cost.
Right.
All right. Any other questions or comments that are constructive? I've moved to approve the phase two graphics.
I've moved to second it.
Properly moved and seconded to approve the phase two graphics. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? School fees, this also requires a motion in a second for us to take action.
So, this is very similar to every year. The only increase we have is the adult lunch price increase, where the asterisk is down here. And the state actually required that we went to a minimum of four dollars and eighty-four cents. So, we have four dollars and eighty-five cents. The fees at the bottom for the daycare, you've already approved, because we had to get that out in the handbook. So, it's just the top fees. And like I said, there are no increases other than the adult lunch increase.
Is the adult lunch, that's teachers, staff?
Correct. We have visitors, getting adult...
Well, we probably have fewer visitors now than we have when, like, we have them.
Yeah, yeah. I would say that's true.
Do we have any questions or comments on the fees? Not, I entertain a motion to take action.
I've moved to approve the school fees as presented.
Is there any motion?
Properly moved and seconded to approve the school fees as presented, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, garbage and pest control bids.
Again, similar to past years, we send out bids for our garbage service and our pest control service. And you can see, we sent four bids for garbage service, and we had two people respond. And we sent, I wanna say five for, I'm sorry, four again, for pest control service, and we had one respond. And so, the recommendation is that we go with TMR disposal, because they were the low bid, and then also D and D pest control.
Is there any reason that Ted Ex didn't?
He is moving out of that business.
He's done it for...
Yeah, a couple of years.
Also works here.
Do we know why there's no bids received for some of these other ones? Just no response, no nothing?
And typically, Dania will call and say, where are you gonna submit a bid, or Rick, if he knows them. And some are too busy, some just think it's too small of a job. So, I mean, there's lots of reasons why, but we just don't receive anything from them.
Any other questions on the garbage and pest control? Not hearing any, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the garbage and pest control bids as presented.
Second it.
Properly moved and seconded to approve the garbage and pest control bids. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, approved tentative timeline for phase one of facility renovation. This is also an actual item.
And these kind of all go together. So, depending on what you do with one, or I'm sorry, with E, then it might alter F and G. But F and G are the resolution to fix the date for the issuance of the save bonds. And then because part of it is an athletic facility that's not attached to the school, we have to have a hearing specifically on that. So, that's what F and G are.
So, one general question I have on phase one. If I remember right in previous discussions, the at-risk remodel inside of the school, I thought was a higher priority at one point. Is there a reason it got moved back or pushed back?
So, we actually have switched two teachers. The purpose was to get, it was kind of a triad of movement. One was take the stage out of the ICN, the stared steps, make that a level floor, and move Family Consumer Science there because of the programs that the teacher had created, and to expand on that. We can still do that work in our current FCS without a lot of renovation. And so, that has kind of been taken off the table. So, our at-risk was going to move into that Family Consumer Science space. And so, depending on when we do the ICN room, based on funding, or that would be probably the at-risk space, because we wanna have the outside entrance access. Because this last year, we had one student, I think, that we had to walk down the hall when they came to the school. So, if we have an outside entrance, teacher pops right out, gets some, brings them in, lets the student go back out that way. It takes care of it. So, we relocated that at-risk room to an exterior wall where there's a door. And so, for right now, that need has been met. And the number of students that we have at at-risk is actually less than we've had in the past. And so, unless that need arises, we're gonna see if that room will suffice. It won't have all the additional services. It won't have a conference space, but we still have other conference spaces that can be used for that. And the other thing that was gonna be in that was going to be, you know, like a shower area for kids who haven't done that. We've worked out that we can use some of our other spaces for that if we need to. So, for right now, that's why that has not been put on that phase one.
Thank you.
And sometimes you get too close to things, and I think I'm too close to this one, because I'm part of the facilities kind of committee. Can you help get a timeline of just what's all been done to get here? If you, I hate to put you on the spot, because that's a lot of dates and times and things like that, and where others can go to get more information, just...
Yeah, so around the time Brayton came, Keegan was part of the first conversation, so our AD previous was part of the first conversation. There was conversation about our football field needing some upgrades, about our bleachers not being ADA accessible in our gym, about the locker rooms, concerns about the direction of the football field. I mean, all of these things have always been conversations in the community.
And just to stop you, they were conversations when we built the CTE building and the auditorium. They were just a lesser priority for public.
Correct, correct. That's my understanding, yes.
And as I was on the board, that was, they were all evaluated.
Right. So, about twenty-four months ago, we started working with OPN to do a facilities needs assessment. So, we had conversations, and I don't remember who from OPN was part of those conversations, but we had coaches, community members, students, teachers, administrators, all in the conversation about in thirty years, what do we wanna make sure we've got right? Right, like what facilities do we need to pay attention to between now and then? And so, as a result of that, we had a long list of wants. Some of them needs, but some of them wants. And so, about a year ago, I would say, we started having community input. We created a facilities committee specifically to look at that list to make long-range plans. That consists of four community members, Mr. Weber, myself, and then two board members, Mr. Knoy and Mr. Benami. And so, from that, the group kind of looked at feedback and was brainstorming, do we do this all? Do we break this apart? How does this work? And so, we decided we needed to have more community input. So, we had two community meetings over the past six months, seven months. And from those community meetings, we had input from community members about what projects they thought were priorities. And this was when we had the conversation that they chose all of them to be priorities, and which ones they wanted to make sure happened, and if any of them should be taken off, or we should scale any of them back. And the information from those meetings was is that they felt we should do all the projects, do them well, and if it takes us more time, then it just takes us more time. And so, then about...
Were those well attended? If I remember right, they were pretty well attended.
Fifty to sixty people, probably?
Yeah, maybe a little less than that. But yeah, I thought they were well attended, based on what I've seen down here typically.
Okay.
I think it was a lot of staff and coaches attending.
Yeah. Parents, a couple of parents, and yeah, people...
If I can, in those surveys, you can tell who was in attendance, because we did ask some of those questions.
I think, I was at the first one, and there was, I thought there were more parents at the first one.
Yeah. I thought there was a good cross-section at the second one, but I don't remember the exact breakdown of who was all there. So, that happened. And then, we met with Matt Gillespie, who does a lot of our bonding work, and just talked through possibilities. If we had a master plan, which OPN had kind of generated about how much things would cost over the next several years, based on the feedback from the committee, and then we took that information and took it to Piper Jaffray, and we just had asked, or Piper Sandler now, and had asked them, what could this look like? When can this happen? Knowing that we wanna keep the district, obviously solvent, but also know that we are charged with making sure that our kids have opportunities and experiences. And obviously, we want them to compete at a high level, and part of that is making sure they're safe in our facility. So, Matt Gillespie worked with us, and we came up with a tentative timeline of how it could work or possible options for how it could work, which includes using save funds over the course of the next twenty years, using Pebble funds, assuming that the community approves the extension of our Pebble funds, and then also a possible geo bond in the next probably seven to eight years for part of the bigger project. So, that was then given to the board. We had a meeting, I wanna say, two months ago, where that was kind of reviewed. In the meantime, and this is what we kinda talked about at our work session today, the legislative session ended, and they have limited when some of the elections and votes can take place. And so, as a result of that, our timeline is to either have a hearing and work through that process now, knowing that we have deadlines to meet, knowing that we want people to give us input and give us feedback on how to proceed, or it means we might wait a year and take the project up next year. So, that's kind of where we are now. We have a tentative, I think, idea of what our phases would look like. It does not include everything from the facilities committee. There are some things that we would have to just assess after the next six or eight, ten years, and see when that, then that would be in the next phase of what that could look like and what funding would be available for it. So, I don't know if that answered kind of the...
Answered my question. And the save funds are, this is the penny state tax, right?
Correct.
And so, we're just, we're basically utilizing some of those funds. This eleven and a half million is just extending from 2029, which is what everybody's been able to borrow to out till 2043, right, Ted?
That's what our plan is, but we can actually borrow to 2051, or 2050 is when it actually ends now.
Got it, got it.
So, that extension happened, and so that allows for more funds for a variety of purposes.
Thank you, that was...
I think, is there any way that we could put something together for the public? I know we're working towards this, but you know, there's just so many questions out there still, and people who have been in the facilities, people who are employed by the school. Couple of things that I was thinking about, maybe a cheat sheet on where we get the funds from, like our financing. You know, what is Pebble, what is Save? Not that we need to go in the weeds, not that they probably care about all that, but I think it would be really, really helpful, how are we funding this? Because everybody, the first thing they think about taxes, or it's, I'm gonna pay for it, it's gonna extend, and all of that. So, I think he had some really good points. I think it's helpful also to just talk about the timeline, where, when it started, like what was the goal? The goal was to look at the next thirty years, right? Here's who we had on the team. We surveyed students, we surveyed teachers, we surveyed, you know, just who we surveyed. And then, who we work with, right? It's not a decision made by one person. It's a decision made by talking to our attorney. We have an architect. So, I think that's just really helpful if we could have, I mean, I say it's like really easy to put a one-pager together with all that information. I know it's not. But I think it would answer a lot of questions. And then maybe like an FAQ. I know we've done that before. And I think Matt had some really good points, too, just on what does phase one look like, what does phase two? Obviously, when we approve that, I think the more that we can release information on that, the better. And I don't know that we're gonna have a bunch of people coming into a public meeting, so I think the more we can put more out on social media, it's gonna be much more impactful for everyone. But just some feedback there.
Maybe an infographic like we've been putting out.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. We did, we did put something in the district scoop about the...
That was great, yes, that was great.
Kind of the overview, so I, we can easily...
Leverage that.
We can work on these things. I guess I would ask, and this is more because you guys get a ton of the questions, we get a few, I think, specific questions. But if you can send me the things that you're getting questions about for that FAQ, I think that would help us kind of generate that to get those very specific things answered. And so, I'm just gonna recap, a cheat sheet on funding, maybe some information about the role that people are playing in this, our attorneys, OPN, for example, Piper Sandler. And then, I think an overview of the background that we just did. And then, maybe an info, I think one of the things we're talking about is what does the communication look like for this for the next three years? You know, so that people understand that it's not just phase one. I know that there was a question in the work session, and I'll share it now, about the air conditioning, and where are we at in that project? So, I think if we can include that information in our rollout, I think that would help answer some of those kind of lingering questions or things that people maybe have from previous projects. So, if we can incorporate that, I think that would go a long way to answering some of those questions. But if you're hearing other things, if you could send that to us, then Brayton and I can work on what that looks like. And we're talking about, once we meet with Mr. Seeley and the OPN team, getting some renderings and putting that information out. And you know, Mr. Bechel and I were talking before the meeting tonight, and he was talking about how at a previous district for him, they put up a camera so people could see the progress. And all of those kinds of things are things that we are, you know, if we're moving in this direction, which I'd like to think that we are at least considering it, things that will work out for a communication plan that we'll present in the July meeting, so.
I think scope is a really big deal. And I think that's kind of what we're gonna learn from our sins in the past on the AC thing. Make sure that if there's phase two and phase three, the scope's still developing, we don't have to be specific. But if we're talking about scope one, let's be specific. Make sure there's no jumping to conclusions on what that, what these phases really entail. And if there's some of it that's yet to be developed, we need to say that.
Yep.
I think that's a, that's a big key. And I don't want to rehash what happened before, but I think there was, there's still some hard feelings out there from the last one.
Well, I think the one even before that, with the fitness center, from what I've heard.
Very much.
Yes, so that's why, yes, I'm well in favor of giving as much information as we can.
Right, and if we don't know, it's okay.
Say we don't know, still developing, yeah.
Absolutely.
Because as soon as people see it written down, they believe it's true.
Yeah, yes.
Not blindly, it's based on the information they're consuming. And I don't want to take any of this pushback as me not supporting this at all.
No, that's what we need.
Make sure that we have good communication.
All right, we have a question. I guess, what is the pleasure here, folks? We need a motion and a second to move forward with any of this.
I'd move to approve the tentative timeline for Phase One facilities renovations.
That's seconded. As presented?
As presented, yeah.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the tentative timeline for Phase One facility renovations, as presented. All those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Letter F. Odds felt to be 11.5 million school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue and referendum and refunding bonds. This is also an actual item. So this is just saying that we're having a date for the hearing to talk about this. This isn't approving any money to be developed, correct?
Correct.
And the clarification is important.
And I think it's-
It is very important.
It is very important.
I just emailed you the copy of it. So it might be worth going through, just so everybody's clear on what it is.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe it is.
Because there's a lot of good information in it, I think. Can we pull it up?
You emailed it to boss, or you emailed it?
I emailed it to all of you, even you, Sharon.
Even me?
Even me.
Even me. Oh, this is, this is G.
And so, so I think it's important to go through at least the 6.5 million of the refinancing of the existing bonds, and why that's necessary, and just-
So do you want me to go through them, or do you want to read through them? How do you want to do that?
If you would go through them, I would appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay, so the first whereas is talking about using the SAVE revenue as our funding stream. And or as Eddie said, this is the penny sales tax that we've had in place for several years. We are talking about possibly, let me see, 423. I don't know if I'm going to read all the codes, if that's okay. We did approve the revenue purpose statement for the sales tax in September of last year. So we have the ability to save this, or to use the SAVE money for the purposes outlined in this resolution. The Board of Directors, through this resolution, will use the money for infrastructure to improve, remodel, repair, furnish and equip high school science classrooms, to build new baseball and softball facilities, including a new concessions and restrooms facility with related site improvements, to relocate the football practice field and improve parking, and then an additional 6.5-plus million dollars to basically buy the bonds that we currently have. So the bonds that we currently have go through, Ted, do you know the exact year? I want to say 28, because at the time those bonds were issued, all sales bonds had to be issued before it sunset, and that was in 2029, I think. The legislation has since extended that to 2050, 2051, I can't remember the exact date. So it gives us more ability to leverage those funds for school improvement and repairs and updates. And so we would, we would roll that 6.5 into our project, which is around a $5.7 million estimate for the new and the renovations, and add that 6.5, so it's now one bond that we would have more time to pay back.
Right, and said, said another way, we took, we financed the projects, the CTE, the auditorium with a 10-year bond. We didn't have the ability to go any farther because that was our maximum limit. Knowing these buildings were going to be around for far longer than 10 years, and so had we had the 30-minute, or the 30-year opportunity, we would- It's like, it's like the first mortgage you take out when you're a new person isn't usually a 10-year loan, but that was the requirements that we were operating under. And so this 6.5 million refinancing allows us to extend out to more, I would say, normal maturity in line with the buildings, but, so.
So then, the next whereas is that the Board of Directors has deemed it necessary and advisable that we issue those SAVE dollars for multiple years, over multiple years, at the 11.5 for the purpose of the remodel and repair and to buy that, the current bonds are refunded 6.5. So the total of those two projects is where we get the 11.5. Then we know that we need to have a hearing for this so that public can give us input, and this allows us to schedule that hearing. The notice of the hearing will be published not less than 10 days, and not more than 20 days in the newspaper, so that will be published. And then the resolution there is that we will have the hearing on July 17th at 6:00 PM, and that we will authorize published notice of the bonds, or the proposed bonds, in the newspaper. Again, the purposes are listed there as well.
All right, thank you. All right, so we do need a motion and a second to take action on this particular item.
I think I know the motion, but just, so Ted, do we have to do exactly what's in your language?
Yeah, we just read it off of here probably.
Got it. I move to approve approximately 11.5 million dollars of school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue and refunding bonds. Well, a resolution fixing a date for a hearing on the proposed issuance of approximately 11.5 million dollar school infrastructure sales service and use tax and refunding bonds. So we're setting the date with that motion.
A second. It's been properly moved and seconded to, I don't know how I'm going to say this. Eddie, you want to read your resolution one more time?
A resolution fixing a date for a hearing on the proposed issuance of approximately 11.5 million dollar school infrastructure sales service and use tax revenue and refunding bonds.
Perfect. It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And then the G is again tied to that. There is another resolution with that as well that we can go through. I can give you an overview. This basically is a change that says, anytime that you're going to be using SAVE funding dollars for an athletic facility not attached to the building, you have to have a hearing specific to that. So this is setting the date for that hearing as well. So very similar to the last hearing, but this is because we're-
Is this a joint hearing, or do they have to be two separate hearings?
Well, they say, they say July 17th.
They can get the same day, they have to be two separate hearings. So we have to have one hearing, answer questions.
A couple of years ago, they put it in place because of people, a couple of schools were-
So we'll have-
Schools building.
Yeah.
Pushing it through.
Pretty nice aquatic centers, and, I mean, swimming facilities, and, but yes. So this is a separate hearing on the same night.
Got it, okay.
I would move to approve the resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on the proposed use of SAVE revenue for athletic facility description project.
I would move to second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on the proposed use of SAVE revenue for athletic facility infrastructure project. All those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I do think they both maybe say 6 o'clock, the contracts, I don't, maybe I'm wrong, but.
Yeah, and this came from the attorney's office, so.
Yeah, we'll verify that before, yeah.
I think it's okay, yeah.
All right, our next meeting, regular board meeting, is scheduled for July 17th.
No, hold on one second.
Can I put all of the things here before I close on all this? So you've done an awesome job tonight, getting all this in position to advance the funding and all those things that Matt outlined, you should go through this. I want to talk maybe just a few things on a couple of things that are next steps, which is sort of pragmaticly necessary to keep this going. So one, I have a question for you. Did anything come to fruition about purchasing the additional land to the west? So we are working within our current boundaries of the property, okay. One of the first things that we need to do that is there is a portion of the existing property that has not been surveyed yet, so we as the designers will need some information on that. I currently have a proposal from Nick, Nick Carter, but that survey includes the property to the west, so I need to get that revised. It'll probably drop at least by half. This will probably be a survey costing, I'm going to guess, $3,300, $3,500. But we would need that implemented, and we will get a proposal, and that would be a contract directly with you, and you would provide us the information. So I will get that, get that going. The other thing that will occur then is while we're working through all the funding, we can, the last time we met, we talked about our proposal and the scope we worked that was in that. We will send you a contract, and we will formalize all that, and we will start that process. This whole scope on the civil was one of the last things that we sort of really needed to understand. The other thing that is in that proposal though is an assumption that we would have a construction manager advisor also on the project. So we haven't selected anybody there. I think construction manager advisor is the recommendation that I would make to you. There's several that certainly can be considered, but I would suggest that we start moving that process along so that we can get them folded in sooner rather than later. By doing that, we can actually get, I believe, an early release package on grading that would potentially go out for bid in September, maybe late September, which should allow us to move some earth yet this year, and position us perhaps to get late seeding in, which is really optimistic, or early seeding in next year, where you might actually get to play on those fields for a portion of the year. So I'd like to get that first bid package out as soon as possible, and we've lost a month or two here, so it'll probably be Octoberish, but I'm suggesting right now, we'll firm all that out. The other thing that process will do is with us actually getting started, we can start to get you some of the information you're looking for about the design and some of the renderings and other things, because all we have to date right now is a few plans for it. So those are the things that I think are necessary to really get this thing moving. I don't think any of those things are an obstacle, correct?
I don't believe so. The only thing we have talked about, I think, at the admin level was we might see about a local contract surveyor as well, which I think we have talked about.
We did, we talked, we-
I don't know if we've talked to them or not, but-
We did talk to Mr. Daniels, and he did give us a proposal.
Okay, perfect.
I guess, selection process for your CMA, what does that selection process, what?
You can hire somebody directly if you want. You can identify someone to come in and to give an interview if you'd like. I think there's probably two that I would recommend to you that you can start with. And then you can, she used to go over there, so you can do it pretty quickly now. That process, CMA, is a lot more flexible than the CMR that's got a lot of restrictions by law now. I would set that one aside, that one takes optimistically 10 weeks to do, so it's not really of value to you here in this particular process. Maybe on future projects.
And if we have somebody local that maybe does fencing, or landscaping, or something like that, should we direct them to Ted, to reach out to Ted, to give contact information?
So that would be an example of if the construction manager is put into play, they'll help us naturally do cost estimation and packaging some things. Those things still have to go out for bid.
Yeah.
So there would be a general contractor in most cases, or a contractor for the package that we issue, that would then have subcontractors that would submit, and it would be up to that person submitting the bid on what other subcontracts they would actually select. But that's a good way to get those things, those locals identified, to get them into the project.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that's important.
There's less move to the CMA for those subcontractors to get involved than there is in the CMR. CMR's construction manager at risk, there's a lot more prequalifications and interviews and all that type of stuff that goes with it, and we don't want to be a game.
Yeah, we had talked about that at one of our board meetings.
And we had, we had talked about, the next step is, once we move through this process, is having that facilities committee meet and determine if we want to interview a couple of CMA possibilities. I'm looking at Brayton because he's also on that team.
I know.
Well, you're on the committee too, so I'm looking at you too. And how that process would unfold, that is on our next steps.
Okay, keep me informed on that. If I can help you in any way, let me know. We're glad to assist the report as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, one last thing. We did do the final publication on the 11/28 meeting, so some of the things that you were asking today are in here. I can leave a hard copy behind, I can have more made for you if that's of interest, and there's certainly always electronic copy, I'm sure, here.
We should probably put that online too, so that that'll answer some of the questions.
Do you want any other hard copies, or I can show you?
I think if we had a copy for some of our facilities people, I think that would be beneficial to have a base document to work off of.
Put mine out at the softball field, right? Think of how many people are going to be there in the next three, or four, or five weeks, right?
Yeah, we've talked about trying to put a graphic out.
Yeah, 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 no, no, I mean, I think we'd love to-
That's a great idea.
I'd love to just hand mine around and say, hey guys, look at this.
So keep in mind, this is going to, you know, group things.
Phases are going to change.
It's going to group things, it's not going to do things by phases.
Maybe a simpler graphic of softball, baseball, here we go.
Get excited for the future, please, I'll leave this, and let me know if you want.
I will.
It's just a idea.
Yeah, no, it's good.
Thank you, Rick.
So for those of you that have looked at the online rosters, it's the last few pages, quite a few people are talking about it out there. It's nothing, it was just after the master, master plan had been approved, our graphics area went and added it. So when you see the online rosters for softball, baseball, just high school right now, if you scroll through that, it has a lot of different documents, and it has upcoming, and it has the photographs that are in that one.
The CMA selection process, I don't necessarily need to be a part of it, but I would like to understand what that process is once you guys determine it. I just, I just want to know.
I would imagine you'll be a part of it because of your expertise, and you sit on the facilities committee.
I want Roger to be a part too.
We're going to tap into the people who know, so.
I don't want to dictate it at all, but I want to be aware of how it goes, how the process goes.
Well, I think that I would, I would ask that you consider helping us work through that a little bit. So we can talk about that with Mr. Weber and the other members of that committee here shortly. And then, just a note, because I know you're getting ready to adjourn, we did move the next board meeting from the fourth Monday to the third Monday because of Dead Week the following week. And so it'll be July 17th is the recommended date, and I think that does not interfere with softball. We got confirmation from the state that we won't play until Tuesday.
Oh.
So it should not be a conflict, I think, for any board members. So just want to make sure the public knew that.
Sounds good. I would entertain a motion to adjourn at this point. So moved, your second.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded, it will be adjourned. All those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We adjourn.